Morning, everyone. This is eight oh four calling the meeting to order. Uh, can I have, oh, we're gonna go into executive session after the meeting, so um, we're gonna call the meeting to order now at eight oh four. Can I have a motion to call?
So.
Do I need a motion to call right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, second. All favor. And, and we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, any comments from the board? Hearing none, can I have a motion to, uh, adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All favor. And can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda personnel?
So moved.
Consent agenda ser- special services, consent agenda business?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Well, something really exciting just happened. Don't miss it, folks, but, uh, the board just appointed Christine Doherty as our assistant director of special services for the Byron Hill School District. Christine, this, this process of finding the just right person for this position, someone who is incredibly knowledgeable about this field in particular, um, someone with a lot of experience, but who speaks so much about children and the right thing for children is exactly what we needed, and that's exactly who we found. So we are so grateful that, um, we know that Byron chooses people to come, but you also choose to be here. And thank you for choosing us because we are really looking forward to working with you. We will complete our team. So congratulations.
Got our team there.
It's a power team.
Very excited.
Yes, congratulations, and we can't wait for your first day when that comes. All right, congratulations. You don't have to worry, there's no big speech giving in.
They should have one.
Give a speech if you'd like.
Okay, uh, unfinished business. Uh, approval of the district-wide safety and emergency response plan. Gina, do you have anything to talk about, or are we just doing an approval?
Um, an approval, but there's a, a lot of information that's been updated. If you'd like me to run through some of it.
Yes, Gina, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, how are you? I'm right behind you, I hear you, Scott.
I know a lot of the language was changed and updated around drills, and just wanted to make sure that, like, in your view, we still have a, a system that is tried and true in terms of preparation, god forbid anything happens.
Yeah, I mean, I thi- I think that's a great question. I think as, um, probably perhaps as things go on and we, we're, we get into the, you know, yearly review of mandated drills and so forth, and we're moving through the motions, um, it's a, it's a good reminder of just how important, even though it seems like just procedural, it's really, really important to constantly be looking at how we're executing our drills and then how we are reflecting. Uh, and at the building level, when our teams are required to run certain drills, there is a debriefing period afterwards. Um, so a system is in place to solicit feedback from, you know, everyone who's participated, um, and also to then refine moving forward. So, um, I'm confident, I know with Brian Hendry, who's our manager through Alteris, who meets with all our assistant principals, um, we have systems in place to meet as a district team, right, twice a year. Um, they meet on a, on a quarterly basis at each of the building levels, um, and so, and obviously as things, unfortunately, uh, you know, occur out there, um, it just gives us an opportunity to reflect on our practices and to ensure that we're doing what we need to do. I think here, um, you know, the state has decided to change some of the names of the drills, although the, the practice and the protocols have not changed. Um, I think one of the, the main, uh, from my understanding and, and in learning about why the change, I know there was some confusion regarding the term lockdown, uh, people were confusing it with lockout, and so they're trying to, um, just I guess, uh, clarify and use secure lockout. Secure lockout is essentially something that we live in every day. Our baseline is that everything is locked. The difference would be if we had to go into a secure lockout for any reason, is that we're not allowing visitors to enter. Um, but, you know, other things like, um, changing the term of, of our building level emergency, uh, team. We used to be just the building level emergency team, now we're the building level emergency response planning team. So we added, um, the letter P in that acronym. So, um, the other thing is that, again, we go back to, um, how we are, uh, practicing these drills and trying to ensure as much as we can that they're trauma-informed, which there's a lot of discussion out there about what is trauma-informed, and trauma-informed really means that we are ensuring that we're notifying. Um, one thing that you'll notice this year that's a difference is that every, uh, week, in the weeks that the assistant principals plan to, to run drills, you will be notified as parents and, uh, community members of when the drill will take place, not the exact date and time, we can't do that for, uh, safety reasons, but within the week, so it might say within the week of September fifteenth, we are going to run an evacuation drill. Um, and any question, like, here's the purpose, this is why we're doing it, and then any questions, um, to follow up with the respective personnel in that area. So that is a change for us here in Byron. Um, and again, just giving opportunity as much as we can to hear feedback from teachers and students especially, um, and how we can, um, further improve our practice. Any specific questions other than that?
No.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adopt the Byron Hill School District, district-wide safety and emergency response plan?
So moved, second.
All favor?
Thank you, Gina.
All right. Thanks, Gina, thanks for all your work on that.
Thank you.
That's a, a team effort, for sure.
And ten point one, Board of Education twenty-five, twenty-six committee assignments. You've all received your committee assignments, everybody good with them? Can we, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All favor? Okay.
And those have all been given to Colin?
Yes, they have.
Great.
And everybody's updated their bios?
Wow.
Ten point two, adoption of Board Education Handbook.
Yes, everyone has the Board of Education Handbook, um, which is a great document. Thank you, Mia. Mia was the, um, originator of this document when she was the president. Um, uh, we also, from that, you'll see the next one is the student, ex officio student Board of Education member handbook, which includes an introduction to students and then the board's handbook following it, so that they understand what a board member, um, does. Now, we will not know who our ex officio students are until the elections happen at the high school and we get the student council members who are going to be rotating. Mia is going to be their mentor, so she'll be meeting with those kids at the high school for a nice pizza lunch, talk to them about what the role is of a board member, and she'll be the point of contact when they're here. But just so the board remembers, you'll be seeing a rotation of students who are coming to the board meeting, which I think is really great to give spread of awareness to them.
Yeah, we're excited to have them on the board.
Yeah, so we have our, our two, um, handbooks to approve, even though I'm going out of order.
Okay, so we'll first do the adoption of the Board of Education Handbook. All favor? Have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All favor? And then adoption of the student handbook, student board handbook.
So moved.
Second.
All favor? Okay, ten point three, the twenty-five, twenty-six goal, board goals review.
Yes, so this is the draft of the board goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and I would like to ask board members from now until the next time we meet on September sixteenth, if you see if you have any recommendations or suggestions for parts of it. Like, I know that, um, the advocacy part is a little bit general, Scott. Um, so I don't know if you wanna take a look at that and see if there are particulars we wanna include, or if keeping it general is more appropriate for this school year. But just to go over, um, we still have our main topics, um, which are consistent from year to year in our goals, which is, has enabled us to really make progress in areas. Um, we start with our curriculum goal with excellence in teaching and learning. It's really about looking at research-based science programs this year in addition to all of the K-five literacy work that is happening, kindergarten transitions, Tim has done so much already with the teachers at Coleman Hill with transition videos that were sent out to parents to help support kids in that transition. Um, Tim's doing a lot of work with teachers and administrators on the Advanced Learners Program at the elementary school in both that and humanities. And big K-12 is working on the MTSS framework. Well, along with the MTSS framework, um, we are also, you'll see when it gets to, um, using data to inform practice, we're really looking at establishing this repository of longitudinal learning for us to be able to not only track progress of, of every student, but also to help with the MTSS framework in saying what are specific needs in multiple points of data that lead us to understand the supports that a specific student needs. Um, along, going back to, um, Tim's, a lot of Tim's goals, um, have to do with, we have our earth and space science biology regions, reviewing those results and reviewing next steps regarding that, reviewing the tri-states visit and the recommendations of the tri-states visit for science. Um, Kevin Guadati and Tim are doing a lot of work together on the AI toolkit, um, really bringing that to life in every single department, um, so that we have that. And, um, moving on to social emotional learning, um, Gina has been, she is our point person with Northwell School Mental Health. Right now, they opened their facility in Mount Kisco. They are thriving, and I know of, um, only because parents tell me, remember this is like a confidential thing, um, numerous families who have gone over there to seek their support for their children already, which is great, it means, and, and I've had nothing but really good feedback as well, that they're very responsive and, and very quick. So I'm happy to hear about that. We also, Gina is overseeing our transition from, um, our school physician that we used to have to the White Plains Physicians Associates, which is including everything from, uh, professionals who are going to be here for our games, for concussion management and protocol, to answering questions about, um, s- specific students and student issues, so that's with White Plains Physicians. And then, um, Gina, again, social emotional health at the schools and just really overseeing what's happening with character strong K-five in our schools so that, um, especially our younger students who have a curriculum, uh, that that curriculum finds its way into the classrooms through guidance counselors, et cetera, so there's a lot there.
Can I ask a question about the Northwell before we go on to Gina's?
Sure.
Is the, is the purpose of Northwell, of the Northwell program for, like, critical, a critical care response? Or is it for ongoing support as well?
Both, both. So if we have a student who's in crisis, um, we do have the capability of getting them seen immediately in Northwell, since we're one of the participating schools, and they have follow-up care. So they are directing that person to either the right facility for the student to receive the help or to, uh, mental health professionals who will see that student in an ongoing basis. They'll also do neuropsychs and, and a couple of other, uh, different things. The, a big bulk of what they do too is, uh, training. So they've come to train all of our administrators, they have come to train, Colleen is, is working with Gina on that, on training all of our psychologists, um, our guidance counselors, uh, just to make sure that we're available of the resources and also available of the trainings that occur there. They do parent nights, so we'll be pumping that out to the community so that people can take advantage of that as well.
It's a great resource.
Yeah. Then we have, for health protocols, we keep this in there, even though I know last year the question was, do we keep it in here anymore? Um, that we remain a prize of guidelines for like the CDC and the Department of Health and New York State Education Department. Um, it is important, I mean, I think about measles outbreaks again, and, you know, anything that's happening like that, it's important for us to keep that as one of our goals, we think. Um, security, um, that's all, uh, Gina too, continuing this collaboration with, um, with Alteris, um, putting together her teams, I think Gina discussed that at length, um, so we're pretty squared away with that goal. Um, and cybersecurity is in there too. We have, uh, fiscal accountability and communications. I know for our current year issues, not issues, but, why did we say issues? It's not really an issue. By current year, uh, we are working on, um, consultants, um, to help us convert these electric buses. We're working on benchmarking for finding long-range projections. We have contract negotiations with the BHTA, the CSEA, the VHAA, and non-represented staff this year. It's gonna be pretty busy. Um, we have strategies to reduce operational costs that Kelly and I have been working on, increasing efficiencies. Um, and we have a lot of projects, like the turf field, which is nearing its completion, and the lights that will be starting next summer and then the summer thereafter, that they're starting to do preliminary work on now. Um, our learning commons at the high school is finished with its outdoor space, I can't wait to show the board today. Uh, the outdoor learning space as well has been completed, and I think furniture is arriving any minute, uh, for that space, but you'll get a sense of what our students will experience, it's really exciting. And then, um, so I'm looking for feedback especially on, um, if, you know, I, I could say everyone, but Scott, I'm looking right at you, um, for the fiscal accountability and communications. I think we really, we did a really good job of that. I don't feel as much like the, um, education reform and advocacy. I think we could still flesh that out, but I'd love you to look at the fiscal accountability and communications and next time let us know, or now, if there's something you're seeing that we're missing.
Yeah, I'll send some, I'll send some feedback on those two sections.
Great.
And then the one question I had on curriculum, which is a broader question, and it may be too soon to deal with this year, um, is with the regents requirements for graduation changing and all of that influx, I think there're gonna be some very big picture issues to think about, whether or not we wanna continue down the road of the regions that we give, or whether we wanna, you know, amend a lot of it. Is it too soon, because do we not have enough clarity to be talking about that? Or is this the year where we're gonna have to talk about that?
Right, I'm gonna address that a bit in my staff report, um, however, the short answer is, Scott, we don't have much detail yet, um, but we expect by the end of the summer of twenty-twenty-seven to have more details over the next two years. So between now and the next two years, a timeline of, sometime this year I anticipate getting what the new credit requirement's going to be, and then rubrics aligned to the Portrait of a Graduate, which I'm gonna show the board the new revised Portrait of a Graduate today. So there's still a lot of information that we don't know, um, but we are preparing to set up for what we do know as much as we can.
So it's summer of twenty-seven, would that be, so is the fall of twenty-seven when the new clock starts ticking for the new requirements?
Um, there's phases of different aspects of the, um, new requirements, and I'll show a bit of a timeline today, and I'll revisit that next month as well. Um, there's, for example, um, it's with, I believe it's our current seventh grade class that will be the ones to fully experience the new graduation requirements. There are some students, starting with, I believe, this ninth grade class, um, that will experience a change in regents requirements. Those timelines, we have to keep revisiting, but we don't have the details on what those new requirements are yet.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so it's scaffolded a bit in terms of who gets impacted by what requirements.
Before we move on to start staff reports, we're just gonna take a pause.
Release you.
Let you, let you move on.
Thank you.
Christine, thank you for coming.
Very excited.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to staff reports.
Uh, hold on a second.
What did she do? Do we know?
October.
October?
Soon.
Okay, staff reports.
It's hoping three weeks.
Yeah, already. Just wanted to give a proper goodbye. Um, so I think I have discussed just about everything I needed to discuss. I'm excited for our walk through today, the schools. I, I do want to say a huge thank you to John Baxter and his team, our custodial staff, our operations and maintenance outside. It is stunning. It's beautiful. The care that everyone has given to these buildings and the work that needed to be done over the summer is pretty extraordinary. This, buildings are absolutely sparkling. Yesterday, I was at Crittendon, and they're putting in all new lockers in the sixth grade wing. So imagine all of the lockers were out, the walls were, you know, you know what they could probably look like behind lockers that have been there for thirty years. New lockers were coming in, and I thought, and this is gonna look perfect by tomorrow, because that's the speed at which everyone works right now, it's pretty incredible. Um, you'll see everybody out mowing, you'll see some last-minute painting jobs, um, and, and to all of our, uh, head custodians and everybody working in our buildings, um, it is beautiful. And thank you so much for all of that hard work. There's a lot of pride that's, I think, really visible in everybody and their work ethic, and I appreciate that so much. So will our kids when they come.
Yeah, they work so hard on the summer.
It must be really nice to come to a place that looks like this when you're a child. So thank you for making that happen for them.
They ramp it up over the summer, they do so much work, and they're the reason that we've been able to maintain everything.
Yes.
You know, as we go along, instead of doing these huge maintenance projects.
One of my favorite things to see this summer was the power washing of the six feet of part circles out from in front of all of the buildings. You know, it's one of those things that we stopped seeing them.
It's history.
We just weren't walking into buildings every day, and if someone said, do you still have those painted circles in front of the buildings, I would say, I don't really think we do. You just forget they're there, but they were there.
Goodbye.
And thanks to John. Yeah, thanks to John, they took care of those this summer.
Enough.
Um, and a special thanks to Kelly and John Baxter, who have been absolutely incredible in this construction project that we had last year. I know, I, that's like a, a one-hit wonder. I don't know if you could ever see that again. A construction project successfully completed, on time, within budget. Um, and it really had a lot to do with John really knowing what he's talking about in this construction business and Kelly's diligence of sitting there and making sure everything was happening when it was supposed to happen and the, um, gentle pressure that needed to be put on to make it happen, so, thank you. Because that really was multiple times a week of contact of work for Kelly and John to do and, um, yeah, on, in addition to everything else that they're doing. So, thank you very much, Kelly, and thank you, John Baxter.
Thank you.
And that's it for superintendent report. Tim?
Okay, yes, let me, um, let me just get online here. Okay, screen, I'll quit this happen. There we go.
Oh, look at your fancy screensaver, Tim.
All right, um, I have a few things to update you on. It's been an active summer in the curriculum department, so I want to update you on a few things. I'm out, we'll talk about the Portrait of a Graduate, and Scott, I just added a new slide from last year to give you the timeline. We'll review that again. Um, talk about Bobcat Ready, this is our kindergarten, um, entering kindergarten student initiative, Parent Academy to Leverage Student Success, which is a pilot project this year. Also, I'll go over a few curriculum projects I wanna point out this year and then give you some data on our summer professional development. So New York revised the Portrait of Graduate this year, um, they just released it this summer. So there are six attributes in the middle here, I'll go over those in a moment. And that's going to be what students will have to demonstrate mastery on in order to earn a diploma. It's these six elements, talk about that in just a second. Um, and New York says that they are preparing all students to be able to learn, grow, create, work, and contribute. Um, these are the six attributes. As you, we look through these, you'll see how I feel confident that Byron Hills is prepared to, um, prepare students in order to graduate, that aligns with each of these. Now, we don't know the details of what the state is requiring in each of these, this is all that has been released. Um, they say by the summer of twenty-twenty-seven, we should have rubrics for each one of these. And then we'll have to assure that students meet these different attributes through our programs and coursework at the high school. Um, so that's where we'll be shifting some of the expectations more to our own internal alignment versus students just, um, showing credit, um, accumulation and regents exams. That's the old model of graduating. You take twenty-two credits in these required courses and then five regents exams. Now the state is shifting that to these six attributes, you'll have to demonstrate mastery in each of these. What that looks like specifically, we don't know. We're anticipating some things, so we're starting to set up some, um, systems to prepare for that.
Tim, does this mean that each student is going to have to have a rubric that's filled out for them? Or is it more of a theoretical figure?
Yeah, that's what we don't know. So sometime between now and twenty-twenty-seven, we're supposed to get a new transcript to see what that looks like. There's going to be a statewide transcript that we will then have to align this work toward. And that will shift our work with the guidance counselors. Right now, we have a comprehensive checklist. You've all had students that, you sit with your guidance counselor and you say, are we meeting all the criteria? That whole checklist will shift to something that looks like these attributes. So you can see this like academically prepared. That's going to be that students are meeting the academic requirements. And I'm sure there's still going to be requirements in math and science and social studies and English, finance, et cetera. Um, so we'll see more details of that. Part of what you'll see the state doing now, they're going to release in the next couple of years, is re, um, redefine standards. They're prior, they're not changing the standards again, those have all been changed in the last five years, but they're going to redesign them, which I think will focus more toward these rubrics and priority standards. That's what I'm guessing.
Thank you.
You'll see things like creative innovator. We certainly have many aspects I can point to that will allow students to engage in this type of work, critical thinking, effective communicator, global citizen, and reflective and future-focused. Those are going to be the six attributes that we will have to assure students meet the, the state requirement when they graduate.
So, and the state requirement will be just mastery of these six.
I guess along a continuum, that's what we have to see, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm imagining a rubric that's going to say.
That's a good idea, right, Mia?
Well, 'cause some of these are, some of these are very abstract, and some of them are, are skills that not every kid is going to be able to master.
Which shows some proficiency on.
I mean, critical thinking is not, you know, that, I mean, that's an effective communicating ability. Like, not every kid's gonna be great at those things.
So I'm thinking about breaking this down. Analyzes information thoughtfully, then evaluates evidence critically. So whether it's mastery or proficiency in that, it's probably going to be a continuum along a rubric, like we have level one, two, three, four, and five on regents exams. And a student may need to have a three, four, and five in order to be proficient in graduating. I'm saying mastery, it could be proficiency, I'm not sure what the state's language is gonna be.
And it's gonna be interesting to see what the state thinks we need to align these with.
Right.
Right? Like, what is evidence of this?
Exactly. So we have things embedded in all of our coursework that show these types of things. I think back to what we do. Dwayne has our freshmen do a speech every year on a position that they have to take. And that's affecting communi- uh, you know, uh, effective communication, it's evaluating evidence critically. Um, in our social studies department, there are several places we have evidence where students could meet that. Scott, so.
Is, is the objective, Tim, to have this, these measures and this potentially new transcript alongside what our kind of current traditional transcript might look like, absent potentially some region scores? Or is there an idea the state has to replace the traditional transcript with something like this? And when you look at all these different measures that they're going after, are they expecting that in every subject? Or are they expecting that across subjects? So you could, you know, so in, in math, maybe there might be two or three that you don't wanna focus on because it's just gonna get in the way of teaching art for math instruction.
I imagine that it's, um, across your four years of experience in, in, in the school. And they'll, what we'll probably end up doing is identifying some capstone projects that align with these to assure that there's enough that students, regardless of what pathway they take, will hit enough of the evidence for graduation. So, you know, we might have several capstones, we might have one in, say, social studies and one in math that will hit different things, but we know all students who take social studies will at least get the global citizen, peace and effective communicator. In math, they may hit the critical thinker and innovator. Um, so we'll have to de- design that once we sort of know how the state's conceptualizing this. So I believe it's across, it's gonna be in their four years. So a school could redefine their entire curriculum if they wanted. I imagine we'll stay somewhat in silos. We do have interdisciplinary courses like our global scholars, and think of science research being somewhat interdisciplinary in nature, hitting a lot of these elements. Um, we'll have to define those capstones and make sure every student has an opportunity to hit some capstone that will give them the criteria.
My guess is so many of our students, based on what they're taking right now, hit these skills in different ways.
Right.
If they're in global scholars, if they're in startup, if they're in science research, they're getting a lot of this already. And that's a fairly good-sized percentage of the class if you take those three programs and combine them.
Exactly.
Hopefully, we can take some of our existing programs and fit this, you know, fit this overlay into that rather than the other way around, like, just totally upend all of our programs because they've come up with this, you know, strategy that, I guess this is gonna be very much in flux over the next ten years.
Right, so that is what we're starting to work on right now, is aligning our current programs with these attributes to see where they fit and where we might need to design some capstone pri- and where we might need to design some capstone projects to assure students are hitting those benchmarks. So, that, that's our current work until we know the details. So again, it's just a summary of this is the new Portrait of a Graduate, uh, designed to prepare students to solve problems in the real world, be flexible and creative. Um, improve their engagement and motivation and um, allow them to make connections across subjects. That's sort of the goal of the state.
You know, it's interesting. I think about this graphic, Tim. And Tim and I just worked on a graphic like this for the Board of Education for the retreat. You know, with this question about how do we measure success in Byram Hills? And, you know, it, it sort of is also something where you have to look at each section, although I would say, Scott, we're far more advanced than this right now in understanding the tangibles that we should be looking at for each of those. But this is a, it's a good, it's a good graphic to give you a sense of what they're looking at. But we'll see how it pans out, as Scott said, over the next decade.
Yeah, some of the details we expect, this is the latest information we got um, this summer. So between now and the summer of twenty twenty seven, they're going to release the rubrics aligned to those attributes of the Portrait of a Graduate. They're going to release reformatted learning standards. So they're reformatting the learning standards, which will help us prioritize our content in the subjects. Um, they are requiring next year that we have financial literacy and climate education embedded into our curriculum. We're starting to work on that even though we don't have details of what those standards are from the state. We have been working on financial literacy. We do some things at the elementary level, have been some piloting some units. And also in our social studies curriculum, we have several opportunities for financial literacy. And climate education, we're looking at doing a review of our science program now and seeing where climate should be brought into. And then, um, they're going to release details on the credit requirement. So we're hoping to get that sooner than later so we know how that uh, credit requirement will play out and we can start planning from there. Um, Scott, I threw this slide back in. Um, so this is in the presentation that's attached in the packet, but I can update that. This um, will give you a sense of what the requirements are for the cohort. So if you think about where your child is, I put in what the current grade level is. So, the state identifies a cohort of students of when they enter ninth grade. So if you're a cohort twenty twenty-three, you're a current eleventh grader. You're gonna graduate twenty twenty-seven. So for those students, it's the current diploma requirements um, that are in play. So if you're in eleventh grade, you are getting the current uh, diploma requirements. For students who are in eighth, ninth, or tenth grade, there's going to be just one diploma now. That's going to be the new diploma requirements. And the current credit requirements will be in play, but we're decoupling diploma requirements with assessments. So for current eighth, ninth, and tenth, you no longer need to meet the current diploma requirements, the, the, the current assessment requirements to receive a diploma. So we don't have details on that information, but that's for students in tenth grade and below. For students in sixth and seventh, that's when the new credit requirement system will kick in. So that's current sixth and seventh grade. So we have a little time for the new credit requirements aligned to that Portrait of a Graduate.
But they're assessing them somehow, right?
Right, but they're decoupling. That's where we don't quite understand the decoupling versus the credit requirements, but it's what I'm understanding is students won't need to meet those, have those five um, Regents requirements. They'll just need to meet the credit requirements, the twenty-two credits to graduate.
So like the final exams for the course would count?
Would count, exactly. But not the Regents exams. And then new credit requirements kick in for sixth and seventh grade, for current fifth grade. That's when the new transcript will kick in. So that's going a ways out, so we're gonna have some time to prepare for that. And then, uh, that's when you have to measure the proficiency in the new learning standards aligned with Portrait of a Graduate. That's for current fifth grade. So there is some time to prepare for everything to be implemented. That's with our current fifth grade. However, some of this starts to play out with some of the kids that are a little bit older. So it's a bit confusing, um, but this graphic helps us at least understand where we need to focus um, our energy for the current students in high school. Does that make sense, Scott?
I guess that's a little, yeah, well, I don't, I mean, the way you, the way it is makes as much sense as it can given where we are, but I think what I don't, what I can't grapple with is how is it that they're going down this road, but they don't really know what the road looks like yet? It's kind of scary. And I think regardless of what they do to a transcript, they can kind of do whatever they want. It doesn't automatically mean that colleges are gonna look at um, the transcript that New York State likes and decide that it's the transcript that they wanna see. So I just think that as it gets closer, it's hard, it sounds like to do anything right now because we don't have enough information. But as we get a little more of a picture of what they're talking about, then I think we sort of have to make our local assessment of, does this make sense? Does it seem sensible or does it not make sense? And if it doesn't make sense, then how much flexibility do we have to do what we wanna do? Um, and still ultimately modify the rules of the state. Because like Mia said, I think the problem with some of this is it is abstract. And it is, uh, I think, I don't want it to derail the fact that we have certain academic standards that we're trying to meet and we, you know, we do a good job of meeting those standards. And I feel like sometimes, you know, there's, there's a risk of that getting, this getting in the way.
Yeah, I agree. And I, one thing I do like as I think through this timeline now is it allows us to be slow and steady and deliberate in any changes we make. So it's not like next year we have to upend the entire system and change it. Um, at first I was uncomfortable with this, but over the last year as I've been thinking about it, at least we're not changing everything. We're not demolishing the building and rebuilding it in a year. We're just taking little pieces at a time and renovating. So we can see, do we like that renovation or not? And do we wanna tweak it before we go on to the next renovation? So at least in a slow.
Yeah, and, and these skills are, yeah, and these skills are important. It's just that you also wanna balance it with what seems sometimes to be missing is that the actual academic skills as well. You're just balancing it all out.
Yeah. Right, so I'll be excited to see those new sort of reformatted uh, learning standards. Um, to make sure we can still have the academic rigor that we value.
Tim, would it be worthwhile to maybe have um, a guidance cohort focus on this also because they're the ones who are interacting with colleges? Um, and it, it would be interesting to know, is this so important to the colleges or do they just wanna see the grades? And like, what did, what do the colleges want? Because K three twelve, the, the end goal for ninety-nine percent of our students is to go on to college, so. It might be interesting to just include them in the conversation.
Sure.
I'm sure they are.
And, and they have been, so.
Could have a cohort.
You know, some of you were on the student, uh, the uh, School Counseling Advisory Committee last year. Christina presented as much information as she has. I'll continue to share this information with her and she'll continue to share that with um, the committee. I think it's a great place for the committee to grapple with this and make sure we're having that conversation with those liaisons we have at the college level.
Because I heard from students, I was on that committee, I heard from students exactly what Scott was saying, like, yes, these are all really important, but when they were applying to college, the grades and, and the rigor was just as important, if not more so.
We do have, um, Christina comes to a board meeting every year annually to talk about what she's learning and I do know she'll be prepared to talk about, you know, things are constantly shifting in terms of what colleges are looking at. Artificial intelligence is definitely having an impact on what colleges are deciding to look at in terms of that application now or what they're emphasizing. So it's sort of a moving target right now. We're trying to stay right there, listening to what people are saying, so we can adjust in real time. A few more things?
Yeah.
If I can go through that.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, so the Bobcat Ready for the entering kindergartens, this was something Jen mentioned and also a board goal, is we recognize students coming into kindergarten. There's a wide range of skills and we wanna help families who have students in pre-K get ready for the kindergarten experience. So what we're piloting this summer, we sent out a series of newsletters called Getting Bobcat Ready. And it's a way that parents can read a newsletter. Each newsletter has a focused area that they can work on with their child over the summer to prepare them for kindergarten. I'm gonna show you two examples. These are the standards we identified and we took standards from the pre-K, New York State pre-K standards. So we um, organized it into, there'll be a series of um, newsletters around academic readiness, around self-help and independence, responsibilities, and social skills play. I'll give you two examples of newsletters that went out this summer. This one is in the academic category and it's, does your child know how to retell a story in sequence? So the first part of it gives you what the skill is in the, the New York State standard. On the left side, it's the parent corner. This explains why it's important. It gives parents how to get ready to help your child. Then on the right side, it has step-by-step directions of what you can do with your child. This one says, choose a familiar story, retell the, uh, read the story aloud, ask guiding questions to your child. Like, what happened first? Then what happened? How did the story end? And then ret, um, have your child retell the story and then add some prompts and pictures. And then it gives some other ways to reinforce how to tell a story in sequence. We also have a QR code that could give resources for them as well. So we're sending out these types of newsletters, which gives parents of incoming kindergarten some skills they can develop over the summer with their child. This one is on, um, does your child know how to put on, take off, and hang up out loud?
It's a big deal.
So, yes. And this is on the self-help and independence. Again, it's all the same format, so it gives step-by-step instructions. We also made a series of videos. I wanna thank Brian Melso, who's in the room here recording us today, who worked with the teachers to put together some videos where teachers describe what to do. I'm gonna show you this one. It's about thirty seconds long and it's um, what parents will be exposed to.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mrs. Boda. Today, I'm going to show you how to zip a jacket. Slide your arms into the sleeves and pull the jacket around your body. Hold both sides of the zipper near the bottom. Push the pointy end into the bottom of the zipper. Hold the bottom with one hand and pull the zipper up with the other. Zip all the way up to keep warm. Practice saying bottom to top, Bobcat style. I hope this helps. Thanks for watching. See you next time.
So I want Brian at the end of the year, or at the beginning of the year even, just to know how many hits that got. Right? Because can you imagine as a parent, you're gonna be showing it over and over and your kid's gonna be like sitting in front of it doing it. These are, these are all of those skills you don't think about. I was an English major. I read fifty books a year at my height. I had two children who I read to every single day and I don't know that I ever said to them, retell the story to me. What did it say? I don't know that I ever did that. Forget about zipper your jacket. I think we had those like slip-in shoes for a hundred years too, right?
How to tie your shoes.
This, this takes up time from the school day. So to get that skill and to think about how to concentrate on what those skills need to be for incoming kids, huge.
Also, Tim, um, I remember one of the things that came out of the literacy study. I remember that there were some parents on the committee that were saying that they could really use communication from the school about how to support their children academically.
Exactly.
So, to me, that's the first thing I thought when I saw this. This is amazing. Such a great way to start out even before school starts.
Yeah.
Helping, supporting parents and helping their kids be ready for kindergarten. So I think that's fantastic. It's great.
I wish I had something like this. Who is this going to? Is this only, is this going to people that have registered?
Yes, it's going to our s- uh, pre-K families who have registered for the summer.
That's excellent.
And we started it in the middle of the summer this year, went out in July. We sent two different blasts with, I think, three or four newsletters each. We have twelve with developed. We plan to develop sixteen by next year. And we're gonna start sending them in April, once they're registered and we have the email list. We're gonna send them like once every two weeks. We don't wanna overwhelm parents, but we feel like we wanna give them some tools. They can print this, they can hang it on their refrigerator, they can sit with their child.
That's great.
Um, and do some of these activities that will help get them ready.
And our parents will.
Do we want to get this out to the preschool association or anything?
Yeah, I've been in touch with the preschool association, so I've sent um, drafts of this and I know the preschool folks and they were, they're very excited about it. I sent them a preview.
Yeah, they've been really good about being much more involved with us over the last year.
Yeah, it's really great. And the kindergarten team, all of our teachers were so excited when we started to conceptualize this. And they helped us plan what's the most important things we need kids to know how to do when they come in.
That's great.
Um, so it's like opening, we had one on opening and closing your lunchbox. Cause these are things that they know take time and they have.
Straw in the juice box pouch.
Okay, we'll have to work on that one.
I still struggle with it.
And it was the teacher's idea to make videos so every, by the time we finish this, every kindergarten teacher will have one video so that kids will be familiar with these teachers as well and know the faces.
That's great.
So it'll make kids maybe not so fearful when they come into the building and they'll have some familiar faces. So, we're very excited about it.
Awesome job, Tim.
Here's some stats. We sent out this first blast. There's a hundred ninety-six kindergarten students. Um, three hundred sixty emails were delivered and three hundred and four were viewed.
Wow, that's a lot.
So that's just a little bit of stats from the backend.
That's a really high percentage.
Um, and that was as of last week. I, this doesn't include the text messages.
Is that unique views?
What's that?
Is that, is that unique views?
That isn't views. That's, that's people, oh, they viewed.
They viewed it. We do have views. So it, three hundred sixty emails went out, three hundred and four viewed in this packet.
Someone has seen it ten times. But, but are they unique views or it could, it doesn't include people who have seen it multiple?
Um, I think that's unique views from what I can tell. Yeah, this is unique films.
So Brian, the question is, is the three hundred four the number of times that they?
That's not the video. This is the newsletter.
The newsletter, right.
I'll check, I'll check the.
We'll have to look at the views.
Yeah.
I'll get some stats on that for next month and we can look at it.
So everyone viewed the newsletter, pretty much, right? The news.
That's brilliant. Really high.
And there was several hundred from text messages as well. I just think of that stat on there.
Nice. So good, Tim.
Um, another thing we're very excited about, we've put together and thanks to the Byram Hills Education Foundation, is this idea that we want, again, to involve families and having conversations on how we can support students and giving students knowledge, uh, strategies and resources. And families' knowledge, strategies, and resources that help their children that are aligned to the things we're focused on in the school. So, um, what we put together is a series of workshops on different topics. That's gonna range everything from early elementary to high school. Um, the areas this year are gonna be focused on literacy, executive function, digital wellness, and that transition from, you know, high school to becoming an adult. Um, and so our first workshop's going to take place on September twenty-ninth at six thirty at Wampus called How Children Learn to Read and Why It Matters. Um, this obviously growing out of our literacy study, there's a lot of interest in parents helping their children at home and how to do things that will actually help their child become a better reader. This is a consultant we've been working with uh, for over a year, who's guiding us in our research-based instructional strategies, Carolyn Strom. She is a professor and a researcher from New York University. Um, if you click on this QR code, uh, it will take you to a website. Again, Brian Melso designed the website. Thank you, Brian. Which has all of the different um, series for the year and you can register for them. If you're interested in the September twenty-ninth, you can register for that now. Just a couple more things. Professional development, so to look at some statistics. Uh, our cyber camp takes place every summer. It's a way we use technology and how to apply technology in the classroom led by our technology department. Uh, Kevin Guddati with his technology consultants, worked with him. It's over four days. We had seventy-seven unique teachers participate. That's about a third of our faculty. And those seventy-seven um, participate on a hundred eighty-nine seats, I call them. So that's about two point five days per person participating in this. So it's really high turnout of faculty participating in our cyber camp. Also, we do summer curriculum projects. I talk about that at the end of every year. So far, this is as of last week. We still have many outstanding. We had one hundred eight teachers participating, coming in and doing intensive collaborative curriculum work led by administrators. Um, and that's a total of one thousand three hundred ninety-one hours of professional development so far. Um, I'll update you with um, the current one at the end of this month, once all of that work comes in uh, by the end of this week. So just giving you a little data on how many teachers are participating in the work that we do. So we're proud of the work that happens in the summer, which makes it an active summertime in Byram Hills. One more thing, uh, pilot projects. I'd like to keep the board updated on any projects that we are piloting, any curriculum we're piloting throughout the year because the board approves curriculum. So sometimes we do some pilots because we wanna know the feasibility with real students. So I've gone over this chart with you in the past, but here are the current programs that are being piloted. I wanna focus on three. No-Adam is our K-five science curriculum. We're now entering a third year of piloting, piloting that program with just a couple teachers per grade level. We're gonna continue that this year and we're also gonna look at a couple more programs. There's some new ones that have come out. I did evaluate thirteen programs several years ago and No-Adam was the one we chose, but there's some other ones we wanna look at before we make a final decision. So we're not ready to commit to No-Adam. We think it's really great and our science results seem to agree with that. However, there are some other ones we wanna look at as well. Um, the U-Fly curriculum, this is from the University of Florida Literacy Institute. This is going to be our new phonics program. It's a pilot this year with every K-two teacher, kindergarten through second grade teacher. This will replace foundation should we choose to adopt it. So it's a really, a great curriculum that's getting a lot of attention because it's um, explicit direct instruction. It's more efficient than foundations was. Um, students should have, will have learned all of their phonics requirements by the end of second grade instead of third grade, so it's a much faster uh, program. We've been um, having several teachers, we're implementing it last year to try it out and speak really highly of it. So we're doing a full implementation. I'll keep you updated on how that goes. And finally, we are looking at a new college board AP core. And finally, we are looking at a new college board AP course. They just released two new APs. The one we're looking at right now is AP Business and Personal Finance. We're looking at bringing that into our startup course. That's our entrepreneurship program in year one. When we looked at the curriculum, most of that content is currently content we do in our startup course, but it has even more content and additional content. So we're going to work with our teachers of startup to pilot a few of the units from the AP course this year and see how they think that works. If we can still keep the spirit of startup, still do our pitch events, make it as robust as it is, but bring in even more content at a college level and still attract the same types of students that are interested in this, then we may want to make that transition from just startup to bringing it, making it an AP course. So that's something I'll keep talking to you as we learn a little bit more about it. So it's, it seems like a really exciting curriculum and it could just enhance startup a little bit more.
So they would take the AP course in the 11th grade or in 12th grade?
Well, whenever they take startup, most students take it in 11th grade, so it'd be in 11th grade. If they took startup in 11th grade, they would take the AP.
And would that be a part of the startup period or they would have an additional period?
No, we think it would be part of startup is the idea.
Would they still take a level, a, a second year if?
If they want to, right.
Would it be like physics A where they had a choice of taking the AP or they'd have to take the AP at that time?
You know, we haven't gotten that far in the discussion. We did talk about options as well, so that's on the table. We're, anything's on the table. So it could be optional or it could be, maybe we just make everyone take it if we feel like they're going to be ready for it. We don't want to make someone take an AP if they're not prepared to take it.
Can they take it separately as a 12th grade or they have to do a second year startup?
So if they take year one of startup, that's when the AP would be taken? If I'm a senior and I'm taking startup one, then I would take the AP at that time. You wouldn't take it again in 12th grade?
Would not.
Right. If we may, there's another AP course in cybersecurity that we're thinking of looking at as well. And we don't know if that would be part of startup in year two or a separate course.
Would any kids not in startup have the opportunity to take this course? So this would really only be for startup kids?
We're, we have the Investments and Marketing course, that's just a semester course. So we are looking at that as well to see how much of that content is part of this course. There could be other options. But when we read through the syllabus of AP Business and Personal Finance, most of it was covered in our startup course. So we're like, hmm, I wonder if we should make that an AP course. We want the teachers input, we looked at it this summer. I met with Chris, Jen Layton, and Lisa Pellegrino, whoever see the startup course. And we did, did an analysis of the curriculum. We're bringing it to the teachers this week when they come back and start talking about it.
That's great. Thank you.
So it's an exploration this year. So no commitments yet, thinking if it makes sense for us. And this wonderful picture, I'd like to keep reminding us of that moment last year of graduation, when we're all ducking from the caps coming down on us.
Tim, Tim and I also would like to share with the board, you have these in a folder for you to preview. We want to thank Christina Wilson and Chris Walsh for the rather Herculean effort in revising our transcript and in creating our updated, really amazing school profile. They spent a significant amount of work on this. Tim and I have been supporting that work. And I also want to thank, we have two community members, Elon Keller and Leslie Goldman. They've been really helpful in this process. It's something that I really enjoy in my professional life in this community, is people who step up, AKA board members who are on the A, right? But people who step up and give some serious due diligence to helping us make something really good. And they have been incredible partners to us. And thank you to Christina for a lot of the work that you were doing with your department to make this happen and Chris and Tim and I for the work we did to support that. But Christina, it's really pretty phenomenal. So thank you. And the board can take some time to look at this. The only thing that needs to be updated is you'll see it has 2024 Statistics Awards and Honors. We have to wait to find out all of the SAT ACT for this current year. So those numbers will change and the grade distribution will change based upon whatever the grades are for that. So, so these are the two boxes, the two sections that would be updated with the 2025 graduate information, right? Which they're getting together right now. But the rest of it is good to go and I'm really proud of it. I think it's great. They added things on the transcript too, so that you could see that students are only eligible for one AP course beginning in sophomore year. So when our kids go to colleges and they show one AP in sophomore year, they know that's the max that students could take. It's really important to have that on the transcript. That our advanced courses are at the level or higher than honors level courses. If there are school districts that call their courses honors, some call honors, some call advanced, we've now covered what the level of rigor is in our advanced courses in relation to honors. And then in addition to the AP courses, we have all of the advanced courses that are listed here. And there will be, after the English 12, Perspectives, and Literature, there will be a demarcation on here before endorsements and seals in Expanded Math. Expanded Math needs to stay on there to explain what that Expanded Math program is for the students who take it. Just really great work. And the board could take a look at that and get in touch with me or with Tim if you have any questions.
When does this take effect?
This will be going out with our kids' information this fall.
Just, okay, so sometimes it's-
Yep, so our kids who are going to be applying to schools this year for next year are going to have the new profile and the new transcript.
When it gets uploaded, I think at the end of September or by mid-October, when all that information's updated.
Yep.
Jen, if I could just remind the board, in my packet, in Board Docs, you have preliminary grades 3 through 8 test data you could look at.
Oh, wow, is it good?
Which is really impressive. So I have a lot to say about it and I'll reserve that for September when I give my full assessment report this time. We call it preliminary because the data doesn't get officially released until November, once the state works with every district to verify the results. So it's not officially released, but I'll do a, a separate report in September and then I'll update you after November with some more information. I'm excited to talk about it.
And I know that I don't, I don't have to point this out to anyone in this room or anyone who watches our Byron Hills Board of Education meetings. You, my friend, blow me away. You are at, I mean, I, I don't know, I think every superintendent and assistant or deputy, I think you may be the only deputy, but assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, they should sit with our board meeting today and they should see the work. I mean, this is good work. This isn't just checking boxes and putting lots of things together. This is touching kids from before they're even getting into kindergarten to parents at the other end of that, to our graduates, to portrait. I mean, it, it is everything in between to, you know, educating teachers over the summer and getting their buy-in. I mean, that was a really impressive number of teachers. So I just, really, Tim, you blow me away.
Thank you. Well, I'm in the position where I can watch those students enter kindergarten and leave when they graduate and I just love watching that journey and knowing that we all together had impact on what they do and what they learn.
But it's not just your level of expertise and your number of years, Tim. It's your attention to detail. You are a brain surgeon at schools.
I like the summer because I can focus and put this together.
Laughing on that off is a lot.
You go in and it's like Tim's hair's like this. He's like the man professor.
Clean up now, now I have to start putting the tie on, combing my hair.
Tim, really.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks for your support. Thank you, Jen.
Pretty awesome. Okay, does anybody have, Kelly or Gina?
Ben?
Anybody have board reports? No, we haven't really started meeting with our committees and stuff yet. Any communications to the board?
Did you just ask for board report?
Yes, yes.
Oh, just to, just one thing to mention. The, that this regional have this advocacy meeting last week. And I think there are a couple of things going into this year that we want to watch and be proactive around. One of which is that given the federal bill that passed in July, there's certainly going to be budget cuts coming in New York State. Nobody knows quite how deep or what categories, but I think the prevailing view is it'll be a frost. Healthcare and education, so that's one thing that we're going to watch as we go into the year. Second thing is similarly, this legislation could have an impact on the EV market overall and the supply of not only cars, but, but specifically buses. And not clear, and I haven't gotten good answers from anyone yet about what impact the legislation might have on New York State's ability to help defray some of the cost of transitioning to electronic vehicles for buses. So I think as we work with a consultant, these are some questions that maybe the consultant will hopefully have a view on and, and will help us think about how we're going to navigate this. So those are just two things that, that came up, I think, that I just wanted to flag because they're going to be important going into this year, both financial related.
Thank you, Scott.
We're all still always waiting for the thing that's going to make electric bus timeline be halted. I thought it was going to be that they were going to open up to schools that we could ask for a waiver of more time, right? Since it was so, the timing of it wasn't, is very difficult. You know, I can't say somebody did the wrong thing, because you want to establish a goal and a timeline, but it's, it's really difficult to try to get this off the ground. But it may just be now it's going to be called the tariffs or something, right? There's always going to be some reason why that's not going to be able to happen in their timeline. It's tough, it's a tough thing to do.
Any communications to the board? Can I have a motion to approve the board minutes from?
I did have a communication to me that included the board members on it that I shared with Mia and Lara. And I responded to the parent and I sent them my response to the parent, but the board did not actually receive the communication.
Can I have a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes from July 8th? I think, Petra, you were not.
I was not.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All in favor? Abstentions, who are they?
I'm the second one.
I abstained, I'm sorry.
And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone, hey, into executive session.
Into executive session to discuss, hang on. 2.1 Legal Matter District, proposed pending and or current litigation. 2.2 Negotiation Matter, BHTA. Collective Negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law. And 2.3 Contract Matter, Individual Employee. That's it. Right?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Brian.